Let's start before Youssef gets here so we get out of here tonight.
Okay, we're about to get started. If you can find your seats and please silence your cellphones. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Monday, April 11th in the year 2022. This is a municipal caucus of the city council. We had a scheduled 4:00 p.m. start. The clock on my cellphone is showing 4:05 p.m. May I have a roll call for the commencement of this caucus? Councilperson Ridley.
Here.
Councilperson Prinzieri.
Here.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Yeah.
Councilperson Saleh is not here. Councilperson Solomon.
Here.
Councilperson Gilmore.
Here.
Councilperson Dejees. Council President Protemp Rivera.
Here.
And Council President Warner will be out for the entirety of the meeting. So we have seven members in attendance at 4:05 p.m. On behalf of Council President Warner, in accordance with New Jersey Public Laws of 1975, Chapter 231, the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting was provided by mail or, well, that's old, by posting it on the website to the Jersey City, all the newspapers, and also to the municipal council, the business administrator, mayor, and corporation council. So I can certify as to total compliance with the Sunshine Law. In addition, at its time of preparation, the agenda of this meeting was similarly disseminated on Friday, April 8th, 2022, at 4:00 p.m. It's all the above. All right, so Council President, I mean, Council President Protemp Rivera, would you like to call the first person up?
Absolutely. Director Shea, Public Safety. Good evening, Council President Protemp, council members. The Department of Public Safety has three resolutions on tonight's agenda. The first one is Agenda Number 1010, Resolution 22257, and it's authorizing us to accept funds from the New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety Division of Criminal Justice to purchase body armor in 20, it's a body armor replacement fund. It's not new body armor for new officers. It's to replace expiring body armor. This particular grant did not exist the last couple of years, and they have just bought it back right now. And it's the amount of $33,653.88. And this is just to accept the money, the purchase, the purchase of the body armor down the road will be a separate resolution. Any questions? Okay, you can go to the next one. Okay, the next two, I'm here on behalf of Bob Baker, our Information Technology Division of Public Safety. The first one is Agenda Number 10-10.16, Resolution 22-263. It's a resolution authorizing an award of a contract. It's not really an award, it's a renewal of a contract to CDW Government Incorporated for the license renewal for carbon black cybersecurity and C Carbon Black Protection License Renewal for the Department of Public Safety Communications. Carbon black, we've been using them for about eight years. That's our advanced antivirus and cyber protection program. It's the one that prevents us from being captured or taking over like you see in the news. Same one used by most of the federal government agencies, and we've been very satisfied with their protection. Most importantly, Bob Baker asked me to tell you that we are the subject of approximately a million attempts a month. And that doesn't make us special, that's everybody. But this carbon block detects them and prevents them from getting into our system. Any questions? Okay, we can go to the next one. Okay, my final resolution is Agenda Number 10.24. It's Resolution 22-271. It's a resolution authorizing the payment of a claim submitted by Broadview Network for providing telecommunications services for the Department of Public Safety. This claim is in the amount of $56,274.66 for services provided in 2021, from January through July. These services were mingled with, when the city was being billed for both public safety and the city services. We broke it in two, and we want, we're paying for our section of that bill. Going forward, we're going to be billed separately. So you'll be getting the bills, you know, you'll be getting it not as a claim, ahead of time as a service. Any questions? Thank you, Director. Thank you, President Protemp and council members. Next presenter, Director KSDPW.
Good evening, President Protemp and members of the council. I have several items here for your review. First one is Resolution 10-25, 22272. And this resolution will authorize the award of a contract to A Lembo Car and Heavy Duty Truck Collision in the amount of $20,000, and that's for maintenance and auto body repair to our Class V, the heavy duty vehicles, such as fire apparatus roll-offs, and that's under a New Jersey state contract.
Any questions? Okay, next one.
The next one is 1026, Resolution 22273. This will authorize the award of a contract to F&amp;S Tire Company Corporation in the amount of $15,000, and that'll be to provide various tires for our city vehicles under New Jersey state contract.
Any questions?
Next is 10-27, Reso 22274. Resolution authorizing the award of a contract to T&amp;A Buy Wise Auto Parts in the amount of $30,000, and that's for non-original equipment parts and accessories for light duty vehicles under New Jersey state contract.
Any questions? Next one.
1028, Reso 22-275. This resolution will authorize the award of a contract to Foley Power Systems in the amount of $56,660 for the purchase and delivery of a 2022 Caterpillar loader through the Sourcewell Purchasing Co-op Program.
Any questions? Next one.
1029, Resolution 22276. Resolution will authorize the award of a contract in the amount of $10,000 to Western Industries North Limited LLC for pest control services citywide, and that's through Sourcewell Purchasing Co-op.
Questions? Next one.
And the last one is Number 10-30, 22277. This will authorize the award of a contract in the amount of $10,000 to Nobel Systems for the purchase of the AIM system, which is the system that's used relevant to the impound of motor vehicles. And this is also under the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance.
Questions? Thank you, Director.
Thank you, sir.
Kadija McNair, Department of HR, Division of Employee Services.
Good evening. Good evening, council members. My name is Kadija McNair, from the Division of Employee Benefits, Department of Human Resources. I have three items. The first one is 1032. This is Resolution 22-279. Resolution authorizing the extension of a contract with Metropolitan Life Insurance Company to provide life insurance to non-management employees as well as retirees for the Department of Human Resources, Division of Employee Benefits.
Any questions? Next one.
The next item number is 1033. Resolution authorizing the extension of a contract with Express Scripts to provide a prescription drug plan for eligible city employees and retirees for the Department of Human Resources, Division of Employee Benefits.
Questions? Next one.
And the last item is 10.39, I'm sorry, 10, yeah, 1039. Resolution authorizing the award of competitively bid contract to employee for family protection to provide voluntary supplement to benefits to active employees of the city.
Questions? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Kyle Greaves, Finance and Budget.
Good afternoon, council. I just have one resolution. Agenda Number 10.1, Resolution 22-248, authorizing emergency temporary appropriations. This is just additional funding for various departments, you know, as we're still operating under a temporary budget.
Any questions, council members? Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Eric Fleming. Admin Department.
Good evening. Eric Fleming, Department of Administration, Office of Innovation. We're talking about 3.1? Yeah, 3.1. It's to purchase a small parcel from the New Jersey Department of Transportation that will make the park we're planning at Summit and Fairmount a little bit larger.
Any questions?
Yes. Do we know the, I was looking in the supporting documents. Do we have a diagram of exactly where the location is?
It's, there's a defunct section of Storms Avenue, and it's kind of in the middle of where the street used to be. It's not even part of the streets, like the center of where the street used to be.
Councilman, we do have a diagram. We'll send it over to you before the council meeting.
No, I, I mean, I actually see the diagram, but I misspoke. I can't actually see where this exact location is. So it's, so before the park was there, was the regular street that goes from Storms to Fairview? Is that it, or?
Correct. It's the, it's the curvilinear street that went in between those two sections. That's where it's located.
Okay, so is that you?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. It's a part of the, part of that street that's no longer there.
Any more questions? Your resolution?
22.253. It's a resolution to grant the acceptance of a $50,000 grant to research the repurposing of a piece of property at 8Foy Place. It's a piece of property that was purchased by the city in, I believe, 2003 for about half a million dollars. And the grant will allow us to engage in a feasibility study to see what we can do with this space.
This is Resolution 10.6. Any questions? Resolution.
Okay. Last one is 10.35. It's basically renewing a contract with AR James, who's been managing and building new bus shelter kiosks. We've been pushing along the old contract, but it doesn't allow us to add new bus shelter kiosks. So with this new agreement, we'll be able to add more bus shelters.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I do have a question, council.
I have a question, I'm sorry. I just wanted to confirm, correct me if I'm wrong, but the contract allows for 35 new bus shelters to be constructed. Is that correct?
I believe that's the case.
And just how can we work with you and the company to kind of locate those shelters in the locations where they're going to, you know, serve the most people and do the most good?
Councilman, we, we have as a part of some of the previous transportation studies that we've done over the past five years, specific locations marked out, and that's what we, what we were using to guide the process. But if you have specific locations, you could send them directly to me or Elias Guzman, one of our transportation planners, and we'll incorporate those into the plan.
Okay, of the current 35, are they like evenly distributed? Or do you have, do you know where they are, basically?
We, we don't have exact, in some cases, we have exact, you know, locations or street or intersections pinpointed based on the studies that have happened in the past. And then beyond that, we have general areas where there's a need for bus shelters and sidewalks are wide enough. We know through our inventories that they can actually be placed there, but they're not pinpointed locations, so it's, it's a mixture of both.
Got it, okay.
And they're pretty evenly distributed across the city.
Okay, great. Yeah, I will send you some of the ones that I have on our list, and then go from there.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No other questions? Brian Weller?
Good af, excuse me. Good afternoon, council. I have one item on the agenda. It's Agenda Item Number 10.37, Resolution 22-284. It's a professional services agreement for you to consider. We need to hire a professional engineer, LSRP, to assist us with getting the proper permitting for the pending greenhouse construction at Reservoir 3.
Any questions?
Ryan, anything on the bridge? Any further information on the bridge?
Not yet. We're working on it, council.
Listen, if it's a problem with the metal getting in there, why don't they just make a wooden bridge going across?
We're going to look at all the options, definitely.
Right.
Any questions on this resolution? Thank you, Mr. Weller.
Thank you, council.
Brandon Ritter?
Good afternoon. My name is Brandon Rutter, and I am an environmental commissioner on the Jersey City Environmental Commission. I'm presenting Resolution 10.43, Number 22.290. It is a resolution urging the state of New Jersey to hold fossil fuel companies accountable for climate change, adaption, and resilience costs. It basically represents a growing movement where state and local governments are taking legal action against big oil companies in an effort to allow them to help state and local governments cover the costs associated with climate change.
Any questions?
Yeah, can I ask you something? How did you get here today?
How did I get here? Via my car.
You're polluting the environment. I mean, this is ridiculous. Never mind.
Counselor, if I could just add, I think part of what, what these resolutions are trying to do is take climate change out of the realm of our individual actions, right? We're all trying to be greener, but none of us are perfect, and we all are beholden to changes and put the responsibility on the corporations who have made trillions off of promoting fossil fuels who knew 40 years ago that climate change was real and a problem, and hid the evidence.
So basically, to just to add to that, this, the way that they were able to go after Big Tobacco and then Big Pharma, now they're looking at this with the, the climate polluters as it relates to, like, the completely not paying attention to Kyoto protocols and the like that's been going on for the last 40 or 50 years. There are other states that have gone to court and have had some successful and not successful cases. So this is just another way for the state of New Jersey to consider whether or not we want to do this. And if that is the case, then they will be paying for some of the remediation that municipalities and counties and states are now responsible for, to do on their own.
And just to clarify, this is not urging the city to sue. This is urging the state government to sue on the state's behalf.
Any other questions? Mr. Rutter, apologize for messing up your last name.
It's okay.
Good job.
Thank you.
Jennifer Kato Wong.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm here to present three items. The first item is 10.4, Resolution 22-251. This is in coordination with Councilman Solomon's office to designate various loading zones in the Gols Cove area on four streets, and they will be in effect during business hours Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Okay, next one. Any questions? Next one.
Okay, the next one is Agenda Item 10.5, Resolution 22-252. Again, this is another loading zone to be designated behind 88 Morgan Street to be in effect Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. to accommodate local deliveries and deliveries associated with 88 Morgan.
Any questions? Next one.
Council, the next resolution will be presented by a new staff member. This is Mike Manzella. He's the new lead transportation planner for the city.
What's the name?
Mike Manzella.
How you doing, Mike?
Good, how are you? Council President Protemp, council members. Pleasure to be introduced to you. Thank you, Barker, for the introduction. My name is Mike Manzella. I've joined the city a few weeks ago as the Director of Transportation Planning. Was previously the Deputy City Manager and Director of Transportation in the City of Asbury Park. Very much looking forward to work with all of you going forward. The resolution I'm presenting is Agenda Item Number 10.36, Resolution 22-283. And this is authorizing an amendment to a professional services contract with Street Plans, who has, over the past 12 months, been awarded a contract. This is to amend it for an additional 12 months and a not-to-exceed amount of $125,000 to assist with projects associated with the Vision Zero Action Plan, our pedestrian enhancement plan, and the Bicycle Master Plan and the Year of Open Space Campaign. Questions?
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Mr. Rodney Hairston?
Good afternoon, city council. I have one resolution before you this afternoon. Agenda Number 10.14, Resolution 22-261. Resolution authorizing an Affordable Housing Trust Fund Agreement with 306 Avenue LLC. This is an affordable housing project consisting of eight units, six affordable, 12 market rate.
Any questions?
Total units? Eighteen. Twelve market, six affordable.
Any questions?
Rodney, what is the level of affordability in the units?
65% and below.
65% and below, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, Ms. Hairston.
Thank you.
Ed Teloza.
Good afternoon, council. I'm here for Item 10.18, Resolution Authorizing Agreement with Microsystem for the Support of Proprietary Computer Hardware and Software. Every year, we have a contract with Microsystems, both IT and the Tax Assessor's Office. The intent of this resolution, basically, in addition to the regular contract we have, we are combining. Instead of having two resolutions, it's time. Instead of issuing two purchase orders, we're combining both. So we transfer our budget for the Microsystem to IT, so we just have one resolution then.
Any questions? Thank you so much, Ed.
Thank you.
Luis Guzman?
Hi, my name is Luis Guzman. I'm with the Jersey City Environmental Commission. I'm here with Mr. Rutter, again, for the same resolution. He said, and thank you, Mira and Solomon, who've already been supporting these efforts. So just in here for support.
Good job. Bernadette. Say it again?
She, she was here for the same resolution Ed Teloza was speaking about.
Okay, thank you so much. John Skor. How you doing?
Good afternoon, council. I don't have the ordinance number, I mean, the resolution number, but it's the corrective action plan.
It's, it's Item 10.2.
10.2?
10.2, Resolution 22-249. It's a resolution approving the corrective action plan for the calendar year ending December 31st, 2020.
Thank you. You stole my thunder, Sean. So, yeah, this is a pretty routine, and it's a, it was part of the December 31st, 2020, audited financial statements by our external auditors. So, you know, they, they went through the audit, and they've, they've come through, come up with these corrective actions and recommendations. So, but just to put it in some kind of perspective, to auditors categorize their opinions as, you know, unqualified or qualified, or, you know, something worse than that. So unqualified is the best, it's not like, it's just saying that the, the financials are adequate and fairly presented, you know, to an outside reader and, you know, to an independent, you know, reader, so they, they know that they're getting the external auditor's view, that things are okay. So my point in bringing that up is that the corrective actions are, you know, important, of course, but it's not, like, it's pretty, I mean, there were, there were the same amount of corrective actions in prior years, roughly, and so it doesn't, I don't, I just didn't want it to, yeah, make you think that it's a red flag. So there's quite a few of them here. There were maybe four of them that they categorized as material weaknesses, and the other ones were like just significant weaknesses. So I put together a corrective action plan, and honestly, you know, so a lot of our issues are really staffing-related, training-related, but also the, you know, volume of employees. We have to face the fact that, you know, there's a lot of manual work in running the government, and, and therefore, you know, needs a lot of, a lot of hands in the fire. So I'm, you know, we have an internal audit group, and I'm just going to make sure every one of these findings, you know, the, the subject matter experts are responsible, you know, for doing what they have to do, and we're going, going to ensure they do it on a monthly basis. A lot of these findings were that, you know, or a few of the, the material ones were that we weren't reconciling, like bank recs and stuff like that, on a, a regular basis or quick enough. So, you know, I'm going, I'm going to address that honestly. You know, last year, we just, you know, haven't, you know, we, we started the process. We, you know, auditing had no staff, really, so we are starting, you know, we are, you know, getting up to a, we have a staff, but there, you know, a lot of them are, a few of them are new, and just some training to be done. But, you know, we have an accounting control group, a finance group, and they're, they're all, you know, you know, they're, you're busy just putting out fires. So, you know, in private industry, you have people preparing the work, putting out the fires, but then you have levels of, you know, you have segregation of duties. You have people who are reviewing work and, and all that stuff. So these corrective actions, a common theme in them is that, you know, through, through the CFO's work and the internal audit division, we're going to, you know, ensure that it gets done.
Any questions?
Thanks, Jack, for that explanation that gives us a good sense. You know, as a, as someone without a finance background, it'd be a little dense for me to understand. Could, could you help me understand specifically the, the finding 004, Significant Deficiency in Internal Control of Our Financial Reporting for the Payroll Tax and Withholding Options? So sort of what happened there, and then what are we doing to correct it?
I think this, without getting into the specifics, I, I think there was an issue there. When I, when I pursued the question further, there, there was some training issue. But the, the problem is, is that whatever, whatever happened here, it was done once, and it wasn't, you know, caught in time. So my point is, is that we're going to have, we're going to, you know, every, everything that goes in to a system has a source document that we want to, you know, that I, you know, would feel comfortable, you know, saying, okay, this is right. You know, the bank says it's this, and, and our system says it's that, and if it's different, I, I know why. So, you know, this went back a few years, and so I think I, I, from what I, my research uncovered, that it was more like a human error, and so.
Okay, and are, are we getting all these overpayments back?
We are, yeah, I, I have not. We are, yeah, I have not, we are in the process, we're talking to the IRS, that was the last I heard about it. I haven't, I don't know what the status is at this point in time, but I'll find out this afternoon.
Yeah, Counsel, I'd just like to supplement that. So we did have two issues that occurred prior years that have not happened again, one being that there was a account interfund that was then reversed, but obviously, it's journalized as money going in and money going back in, so it's, money coming out, going back in, so it's a net zero, and it's documented in the audit, but that was obviously a miscalculation and a human error. That hasn't happened again, that was roughly two years ago. And one of the issues with the overpayments was there was some confusion, both at the start of payroll tax and then kind of ongoing, is that it has to be remitted quarterly by the entities, and some of them pay the whole year upfront. So then it's a reconciliation thing where you go back and, you know, I don't think they do it intentionally to avoid taxes, but they could expand and have more employees in June, and as a result, they would owe more money, so we make sure that we go back and make sure that they credit the account, and then go to each of the four quarters.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jack.
Yep.
Tanya? Tanya's here?
She was just here.
Oh, there she is.
Oh, she's right here.
You're in the batter's box.
I think I got skipped. I have two, two things that I put my name down for, but they're both second reading, so let me know how you would like to kind of address this or handle this, tackle this.
Tanya, can you bring the mic a little closer to you? There you go.
Is this better?
Much better.
Okay. I have actually three ordinances that City Planning has on, but they're all second reading, so I don't know which one you'd like me to address or not address. One of them is an amendment, the Harson &amp; Coe is an amendment. I can speak to that slightly, it's just that I, yes, the developer is here, I don't know if they also want to put anything on the record. The amendments, from my opinion or minor, and they have more to do with addressing a comfortability level for the embankment coalition. Really, a lot of, if you're looking at the amendment language, you can see the three different colors, and one of them represents the City Council amendment, amended language, and you can see a lot of that language refers to the right-of-way for the Sixth Street Embankment. And the other one that I think, as a follow-up, I had with the Law Department last week, was on the Water Street and just verifying that it did not trigger the IZO.
Okay.
Yeah, I can confirm that we have reviewed that and confirmed, apologies, that was a late add last week, that that does not trigger either the previous or the latest iteration of the IZO.
Yeah, can you, um, Tanya, oh, Peter, can you explain exactly why it doesn't trigger the IZO?
Sure. So, within the new IZO, there's three triggers, right? One is the C and D variances, and those are things that we hear at the planning or the zoning board. A D variance can be a use variance, a height variance, a density variance, things like that. The other is a redevelopment plan amendment, and that's something different. It's not a C or a D variance, it's something that this, this board, U City Council, have to vote on and amend because it becomes law. This is what that falls under, falls under the redevelopment plan amendment. And so in that instance, it's not creating five units more, or 5,000 square feet or more, because the square footage that would have been on the two sites where 440 Farms is, is just being put onto the buildings directly adjacent to the east, where would have been 12, it's going up to 15, but it's just to accommodate all the square footage that was on the other site. So in this instance, it's not triggering a C variance or a D variance, it's just a redevelopment plan amendment, and the amendment does not result in an additional 5,000 square feet or five units. If that makes sense, yeah?
It makes, it makes sense a little bit. So in short, and in simpler terms, it's really not triggered because, in essence, the developer is going to have this heightened density at another location?
Not getting extra square footage or units, that he would have had he had built out 440 Farms, where it is. Yes.
Okay.
It's a, it's a, it's a puzzle, sometimes, trying to figure out what, and what doesn't.
I guess, the only issue that, that I have with this particular proposal is that while he's allocating, or they're allocating the same exact square footage, it's going up, and as we know, in real estate, you know, the, the, the higher, for the most part, it's the more money, and this project is just so perplexing in so many ways. It's not really like you're doing the, the city a favor by not building there. If you build there, you'll be blocking the view of your other building that you own, that you house people there. So it's not really like you're, you know, doing us any favors. And for the life of me, I guess we, we would really, we really, as a council, had to review the IZO, because this, it, in my opinion, it should trigger the higher, there should be some affordable, you know, the developer stands to make out huge profits, even with all of the buying of property and giving it back to the city, the developer still stands to making huge profits.
I think in the amendment language, it does call for redevelopment plan amendment to give over the new part of Water Street as a public right-of-way, and to, and the interim, I believe, provide for public parking on lots four and five, which is where, where 440 Farms is now. I know that doesn't answer exactly what your, your question is, I just wanted to say that is also what they're considering to be a community benefit added on the record.
But again, that community benefit also benefits the establishment, right? You beautify the area to entice people to move into your establishment.
Any other questions?
So, so, Tanya, then, just, just to clarify, because this is, you know, we, this, this came to council, the councilman, since you were not with us the previous term, this came to council previously, and I tabled it, because there were questions on whether or not this triggered the inclusionary zoning ordinance at that time. This gave the planning department and the developer and the Law Department time to look at it to see if it would actually trigger, and because this is owned by floor area ratio, it allows for that movement of this to the next building, correct, Tanya? That's, and that's why it's not considered additional density, which would trigger, because two of the major redevelopment plans in Ward B are zoned by floor area ratio, and that's why we have the five-unit or 5,000 square feet addition tacked onto that, to make sure that in these instances, if it was triggered, it would trigger the IZO. Now, we've held two community meetings, and I've shared the plans with residents in the area, and this cleanup of the front along 440 does a couple of things for those residents who are long-term residents, who are invested, some of them are multi-generational family homes there. It cleans up the area, it makes it safer, they're doing stormwater mitigation, flooding mitigation over there, which is, which always floods whenever it rains, if you live over off of Claremont in that space. They're putting in additional lighting, which is additional safety to the residents, because right now, with Water Street closed off because 440 Farms is no longer active, there's been a big uptick in crime along that street, we had to close that street. And then they're providing additional 40 parking spaces for the residents who live there, this is public parking. So while I understand the point, and I wish that it would trigger an IZO and include affordable in there, but it didn't include it when they first went before the planning board, back in 2017, when it was approved, and unfortunately, it doesn't do it now. But the community that lives directly adjacent to these properties, that has been there again before they were there, are very interested in this, in benefit, because it directly affects their public livelihood and their safety, because if you go by there, it's, it is, let me watch my language, it does not look nice, and it's not safe. So I understand your piece, and I do understand working with the planning department on some of these things, especially as it relates to these development plans that are zoned by far, because I agree with you there, but in this case, we've examined it twice, three times now, and unfortunately, it does not trigger it. Was that a correct assessment? Yes. Okay.
Any other questions?
I just want to make sure, Councilman Solomon, are you okay with my representation of the amendments for Harson &amp; Coe? I know it was very brief, and I know you wanted to make sure that the community was represented.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's worth, one is, I think it's worth having GNS, the developer, present, just so, because the council knew that we, we bumped this, deferred this a meeting, and then there's been in that time, a sort of big back and forth to try to amend it, and as Tanya said, the amendments are not, they're not substantial per, I think, Law Department review, but I think it's worth just understanding where they came from, what they're trying to accomplish, and then I think it's worth hearing from GNS, and I can present my own side, and at least what I've heard from Embankment Coalition and things like that, just so everyone is fully briefed before Wednesday, because we'll be asked to vote on the amendments, and then, I think, per Law Department, because they're not substantial, vote to pass the amendments, and then pass the plan. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Council members, just for the record, Councilperson Saleh is present at 4:42 PM, so we now have eight council members present at 4:42 PM.
Good afternoon, council members. My name's Abe Napperstock, I'm with GNS Investors. As Councilman Solomon said, I'd like to just provide a little bit more context about the amendments that are before you. So the, the main goal with the project that we're focused on right now is to keep ShopRite at the Metro Plaza site for many more generations. In order to accommodate that, we had to, you know, we're putting them on the second floor of the next building, and to accommodate the size and scale of that store, we had to expand the podium, so not the height of the building, but the width of the building, at the ground floor. What that did was it created some back and forth with the Embankment Coalition to ensure that we would be able to receive a future embankment connection, you know, once and if that project happens in the near future. So as Councilman Solomon said, there's been a tremendous amount of back and forth with the community that surrounds the project, particularly with the Embankment Coalition, to try and sort of balance the various interests that, you know, the city had, that, that we had, and that the community had. You know, I think we've come to a, a, a strong compromise, I wouldn't say that, you know, everybody's perfectly satisfied, but I do think we've done our best to ensure that we could balance all of these competing interests. Two things that we wanted to note, we did shift some of the open space in the overall Hudson Exchange plan. On balance, the amount of open space increased by 20,000 square feet across the entire 18-acre site, so it went from 115,000 square feet to 138,000 square feet, which is about a 20% increase. And the second thing I wanted to note was, there's no additional density that was created on, on the site, or anywhere across the Hudson Exchange project. You know, there's a, no additional height, no additional units, and no additional square footage. So that all stayed consistent with the existing approvals, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
And if I can just add, because again, I just want everyone to be fully briefed before Wednesday, one, just, so, I'm speaking for myself here, and then I'll add something from Embankment Coalition, so the, you know, the embankment obviously ends at that Sixth and Maron corner, and this does shift the podium of the building a little closer to Sixth and Maron, so the concern is, how do you ensure that there is a, you know, kind of a reception area there, and that there's a full build-out? And what gets a little complicated is there's sort of two landowners there, majority is GNS, but then there's a little sort of weird triangle sliver that's owned by Lefrac that connects into where that Wells Fargo Bank is, if you guys know the Plaza area. And ultimately, what we're trying to do is guarantee that that gets built out fully as a park to connect into the embankment. And what the amendments you'll see require is, they require GNS to build out, everything is a park on their land before it becomes a CO is issued. If Lefrac ever changes the use, so Wells Fargo changes anything, they have to build that out, and then ultimately, what's envisioned is ultimately a land swap, so that that land becomes part of the GNS property, and they can build out the full portion, and we don't have to deal with two landowners, we just deal with one. And I think, I think that's all good, and I think that's all been pushed through these conversations over a year, and puts us in a much better place where these requirements weren't in this plan beforehand. Now, the Embankment Coalition, I think, is gonna email, and so you guys know their full position, I think they still have some concerns, and where their concern lands is that what happens ultimately if this land swap isn't effectuated, only this, you know, it's like 90%, but what if 80 to 90% is built out, but not that final 10%? And we have had conversations with City Planning about what do we do in that case? And the city has a number of tools in the toolbox, including the potential option of using eminent domain to take it, but other tools as well. So we are very cognizant of, we think this is all gonna go, you know, work well, and we're gonna get that built out, that'll be a great entrance to the embankment at Sixth and Maron, and then we're thinking through contingencies, but understandably, I think the Embankment Coalition is looking at that, saying, we want as much certainty as possible, and they're always gonna push for more certainty, and then, you know, I'll let them speak in their own words, I know they're gonna send something so you guys can see that. But ultimately, there has been a lot of back and forth, and I think these amendments, in part through the amendments in Embankment Coalition, have made what's coming before us stronger, and then just on a personal note, I think, for other concerns, I think, one, keeping the ShopRite is very important, it's an, you know, we used to joke, it's like The Hunger Games when you go the weekend before Thanksgiving, because there's so many people in that ShopRite, but it serves a ton of people for downtown. This does allow it to move, it also solves a street safety issue, which the truck's currently back in and out on Second Street, which creates, it's a two-way, there's a daycare right there, and so now the entrance will be just off Maron, pulling into their thing, so it's, the move will create a street safety. So I think it's gotten to a place where there's, these amendments that we worked on over the last month make it stronger, I understand why the Embankment Coalition still has concerns, but, so, there's only so much you can address in the RDP. So hopefully, that gives you guys the context, and then Embankment Coalition should have a statement that they'll have for everybody as well.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Stacy Flanagan?
I have several items on the agenda. The first one is 10 point 7, Resolution Authorizing the City Department of Health and Human Services to Accept Additional Funds From the New Jersey Department of Health For The 2022 Federal EHE Grant, Which Is The Eradicating HIV Epidemic. This is additional funding that is for the department to create linkage agreements with the other nonprofit agencies across Jersey City to work on increasing HIV testing and referral systems. There are three other nonprofits that were awarded additional money so that we can work stronger together, and the 2002 funds are prorated, so it's like a $48,000, in 2023, it'll be, I think, $75,000, and it'll be for the next three years after 2022.
Any questions? Next one.
10 point 8, which is a resolution of the Municipal Council, the City of Jersey City, authorizing the application for an acceptance of a supplemental grant from the Hudson County Department of Health and Human Services for the Municipal Alliance To Combat Alcoholism And Drug Abuse. We were here several weeks ago with the original grant exception, we got a call from our grant supervisor that there's additional funds, we would like to accept those funds, we're having a meeting with the alliance, is it Thursday, Danny, when is that meeting?
Thursday.
Yeah, so we're having a meeting with the alliance on Thursday, the alliance would vote on how to utilize that money, and then we would come back to you with the sub-grant for that fund.
Any questions?
Yes, so, currently, how do, how does our, how do we address that demographic now, currently, outside of these funds? What services?
Currently, we only utilize the funds that we're given to do this work. Any other funds would have to be, I guess, through the Division of Community Development, probably, for other nonprofits that are doing this work. So what we do through the Municipal Drug Alliance, we receive funding from the Governor's Council on Alcohol and Drug Abuse, the JCCADA. That fund gets broken down to every municipality, you get like $1 per resident. You get like $1 per resident, per census tract, and we take all of that money, or this was like the past script, and then we select an alliance, so we're going to come to you with a new list of members that you will be able to approve, based on like very prescribed items from the JCCADA, like someone from the school system, someone from policing and public safety. So historically, that's been Rudy Snelling from, at the time Prosecutor's Office. Since he's left the Prosecutor's Office, we need to fill that position, things like that. Then that team reviews applications every five years, and then we give money to nonprofits. So currently, those nonprofits that are getting money are Hudson Pride to reduce like alcohol drug use for teens that are coming out or are struggling with coming out. We give funding to Covenant House, Hudson Homes, Hope House, Jersey City Anti-Violence Coalition Movement, Educational Arts. I think that's, but so, each of them gets a bit of money. We submitted all of that information to you, I think, a little over a month ago of what each of them are getting, so now we've got an additional $24,000, and that was just like an added bonus to what we have in the past, and we have not, the group will meet, and they're meeting this Thursday. I mean, it's open to the public, so you can certainly join in the meeting. And then the voting members will vote on how to spend that money, and then we'll present that for a subcontract to the council.
I mean, I've seen the lists of entities that received the funding. I'm also concerned about how these programs look. And, because I'm looking at a huge epidemic on the Florida of MLK, and for the life of me, it looked like there's no assistance available.
Well, it's not intervention, it's prevention. So this occurred at the change of the governor's office. The governor's office creates like the vision. In the past, we were able to spend a significant amount of money on creating training programs for drug and alcohol response counselors, and that's like par professionals doing that work, as street teams with partners in prevention. The new director of this fund will not let us do intervention and/or fund training, so we can fund prevention slash education to youth. And the auspices have been over the last several years is conversations with youth to avoid the like entry into alcohol and drug use. So anyone who's already sort of entered into that space, there is no funding right now at the department for intervention for that space. Now, I'm going to present to you something that's in your queue, which is a community response to that work of opening up an RFP to engage mental health professionals to take those calls that come to 911 that might be mental health-related, and oftentimes, there are some drug and alcohol use and abuse involved in that work, but we don't have a street team on our team. Hyacinth has a street team. There are some people that do street work for Hudson Pride. The county has some money to do that work, but there's definitely more work out there and more money that we are continuing to seek funds for. So you know, 60% of the department is not funded by any tax dollars. It's state, federal, county grants. So when there's, money comes up, we often apply for it to try and get more staffing. We do address it, I will say, except for the fact that we do address it on the homeless side with some money from, is that CSPG that we got for the homeless outreach? It was the COVID-related. So when we're out in the field with the health boss, if we encounter someone who is using or sort of in a space of addiction service support, we'll continue to visit them, and we'll make referrals, and oftentimes, we'll bring them to a referral, because I think the biggest piece of this is like the connectivity to someone like accepting the referral, but then getting to it, and then whatever that referral outpatient relationship is. There's a lot of money going directly to mental health providers, particularly Bridgeway, to do that work, because they're open 24/7.
Okay.
So it basically is for youth and young adults?
Correct.
Yes.
This particular one?
Yeah, education, prevention measures.
Okay.
Next one?
Okay. This is a resolution authorizing the City of Jersey City Department of Health and Human Services to accept grant funds from the Hudson County Department of Health and Human Services for peer grouping meal program and to execute a grant agreement. Peer grouping is funds that are carved out by the county for individuals that we address under the age of 60 that need meals on wheels. So if you are disabled, but you're not 60, this peer grouping money comes out of the Office of Disability Services from the county to offset the city's cost for serving meals on wheels to people who are not seniors.
Any questions? Next one?
The next one is 1020, and this is a resolution authorizing a shared service agreement with the County of Bergen pursuant to Uniform Shared Service Consolidation Act, NJSA 48, you know, 651, for the City of Jersey City to provide services related to the prevention of cancer. Over the last four years, we've been in this partnership with the Bergen County Department of Health. They pay the City of Jersey City to execute Hudson County-related chronic disease prevention work. So it's majority cancer-related, so it's programming that we do in churches and community centers. And right now, it's funded by Bergen County, and I think this is the last year of funding. The new RFP just came out, and this is a lot of work for Bergen County to like manage us, so they're just sort of recommending we apply for it on our own. When, I think when they got involved, they didn't realize how hard it would be to manage two counties. So this is $35,000. This pays for one of our employees, so this pays for a portion of a health educator that's dedicated to this work.
Any questions? Next one?
This is a resolution authorizing a shared service agreement with the City of Bayonne, as per the Uniform Service Consolidation Act. The City of Bayonne, we've requested them to temporarily provide the city with services of a health officer. Dr. Bastola has left the City of Jersey City. He is now the health officer of Englewood. With an interest in hiring someone internally, we are temporarily requesting Bayonne to cover our health officer services so that several of our staff can take the May exam. This exam, to become a health officer, requires you to have one of five different kinds of master's degrees. There's only seven people in the department that have this degree. Three of those individuals are going to take the test in May. We hope one of them passes. It's a really difficult test to pass, which is in fact why we sought out Bayonne, because they had gone through this for many years, kind of having someone else temporarily cover as their health officer was taking the exam. We first went to Hudson Regional Health Commission, because we pay into this regional health vision, but because of COVID, the board did not agree with Kerry taking over Jersey City. But the City of Bayonne is allowing this to occur, and the costs are about what it would cost the salary for us to hire a health officer, but trying to hire someone who already works within the department and/or lives in the City of Jersey City would, we thought, would be most beneficial right now.
Okay, questions?
How is this going to work in terms of, are they going to allocate certain hours for Jersey City? Or, because it seems like such a small amount of money, but how are they going to service the City of Jersey City versus City of Bayonne at the same time?
So some of the programs that we work on are very similar. It comes straight out of the state, so, you know, every Monday morning, there's a state call regarding COVID. Every Wednesday afternoon, there's a local health officer call. So Michelle O'Reilly, who is the health officer of Bayonne, would sit on all those calls on behalf of Bayonne and Jersey City. I sit on them as well. I'm just not, I don't have the proper master's degree, and being all but dissertation doesn't get me anywhere in this system, because it's not the right, you know, it's not a nursing, it's not public health. So like in the exact titles that you need to be able to sit for the exam, I don't have. So the state doesn't recognize that. We have a health officer structure where we have a health officer and an assistant health officer, and for many years, we filled that position with an EPI. So we are surrounded with like the people with the skills, and Michelle just needs to have signatory power, so she's dedicating 15 to 20 hours a week to us. We reach out to her anytime we need something. She's actually been pretty good so far of like getting back to us within the hour for anything, and after hours of like a traditional day, she's available, because her job is technically 24/7 for any uptick epidemiology issue to address and have our staff reach out from the communal disease reporting and surveillance.
So there is an individual in mind? It's the, what's the name of the Bayonne health officer?
Her name is Michelle O'Reilly.
Michelle O'Reilly.
And we worked this out with the BAs from both here and the BA from Bayonne, and how that structure happens. If we don't have a health officer, we can obviously still operate the department, we just can't get access to state systems, and those are pretty important.
Okay. Any other?
This is temporary?
This is temporary. This is due June 30th. The exam is in May. We had someone sit for the exam in November. He didn't pass both parts of the exam, and he's a trained doctor. So like this is how interesting this exam is. So now we have three people that have applied to sit for the exam, Linda Ivory Green, Paul Bellin Boyer, and Dr. Lauren Siron, and we are hoping one of them passes. If not, I will know by the beginning of June, and then would open this title for employment.
Deal to the chair.
Okay.
Director Flanagan, you mentioned that Hudson County Regional Health couldn't do it because of COVID. What does that mean? Are they short-staffed, or?
The board did not feel that Kerry, because you have to be a health officer, so it would be the executive director, is Kerry Noraki. All the health officers across the county are on the board, and they felt that that would pull her away from leading, because she's already got like three technical jobs with, she manages Essex County, Hudson County, and COVID for Hudson County, because she's, they're on contract with the County of Hudson for all the COVID intervention they do. So they just thought that would be a little much.
Any other questions? Your next item?
The next item is 1034, and this is a resolution ratifying the emergency contract award to bespoke for the COVID testing that occurred from January through February as part of the emergency contract, which was part of our response to COVID. And as, just so you know, not until today did the state offer home tests to the City of Jersey City with the maximum number of tests of being 13,000. So we're going to take all those 13,000 tests, but with this emergency contract that we did in January, we purchased 13,000 tests. We have 4,000 left, and we're just trying to kind of bridge the gap for people in need as HERSA has changed the laws on COVID testing. Just so you're aware, that if you do not have insurance, COVID testing costs anywhere between $75 and $150, and that's just outrageous. So we have right now about 4,500 home tests. We're continuing to give to the public. We will respond to the state's request to get another 13,000 tests, and we'll still operate rapid tests at both of our senior centers. And then when a public group requests, so if any of you were at the Greenville Neighborhood Association meeting two weeks ago, they requested onsite COVID testing, and we are able to provide the tools for someone to do self-testing.
Questions?
What's the unit cost for the test?
Each test is $18 on our side for home tests. So we've already, so we did this in emergency contracting. So when we came to you in the beginning, we were like, this is an urgent need. I spoke at the January 11th, 7th, I don't know, the first week in January before, because no one was getting their test results. So we initiated emergency contract to have the public get tests available to them. So one part of this was the execution of five weeks of tests in seven different locations across the city. You may have gone and gotten a test yourself, but we did this at Ferris, we did this at Collier, we did this, one of the churches you recommended, Councilwoman, I don't remember. So we did this, and we did it at Paco, we did it, we did this all over the city. That was because the labs weren't getting back to people, and people were calling us constantly, looking for their results, and we don't manage the labs. All labs operate with a state system, and I think, I recall, I told you at that time, we were working with the Quality of Life Task Force, and we went to the Attorney General because we felt that the labs were being slightly disingenuous to people by charging their insurance and not getting them their test results in a timely manner. So we took it upon ourselves to help people get tests, so they can get back to work, get on a plane, go back to their families. So five weeks of this was execution onsite of those seven different locations, because there were all six wards. We started where we owned space and then worked on partnerships in other locations, and that was for staffing, because we didn't have the staff power at the time.
The requisition, is it for one month? Is it for?
It was for, the total was for?
Contract?
Five weeks of actual hourly support, pod testing, plus the 13,000 tests we bought, because that's one pallet of tests.
When is this contract up?
It is, that's up.
It's been up?
Yeah, it was an emergency contract that was executed during those five weeks.
So for, it's $18 a test, you say, right? They administered these tests for five weeks?
Oh, those are different. So they bought us 13,000 tests for us to hand out to the public. You do an event, we show up with tests. In addition to that, they had tests, they were doing onsite for people that needed. So I don't know if any of you have traveled in the last two years, but to get on a plane, to go somewhere, need to prove that you've had a COVID test, and they do not accept home tests. So this was right around the holidays, where we had 23,000 cases of COVID between December 1st and January 31st. And during that time, when the governor allowed us to execute an emergency contract, the very next day I was here on the phone with purchasing, saying, can we execute an emergency contract so we can get some people test results, so they can get back to work or get on the plane and go get to their families? So then we executed five weeks of that, and in those locations, the money went to the staff that were executing the test and the tests that they used then, plus a pallet of home tests that we're giving out everywhere we go.
How many tests did they administer outside of the 13,000 from the contractual frame?
About, about 13, somewhere close to 13,000 tests, but I'll get, that I think I've already sent, but I'll send it. But I'll get, that I think we, I've already sent, but I'll send it again. I don't have that in front of me because I didn't know this was on the agenda. Sorry.
I think it's just the supplemental material is confusing because the requisition?
So there's two separate?
The requisition is in dated and the extra material is dated just the January 6th to the 15th. It talks about test kits that were ordered, doesn't necessarily mean that they were used. And then the hourly rate for all of the pods and how many pods and the hours, and just doing the math, it's not close to 1 million.
John?
I think it's just the backup material that's confusing. And I know that this was something that Councilman Saleh had brought up of getting some more of a breakdown. Really appreciative that we did get that breakdown.
Sent all of this. I did send all of this. So there's an Excel that I sent with like every day of every location and the total number of hours. And we did appointments in the beginning. And then as things started to wean, we were like, if people come in, we'll handle them.
So BA, can you give us a breakdown on that? Or just?
Do you have it in front, do you have it in one of the emails that I sent? Because I don't have that in front of me.
Yes, so what we'll do is we'll compile all that information. And I understand it was, like I mentioned before, various documents, different. So we'll put all that together, maybe in numerical order, and then we can get an aggregate for you guys.
But it's, it's, there's, it's not even aggregated. I gave you the hours and the number of tests per location.
Yes, Director, and she's saying that she's looking at it and she's trying to compare it. So we're just going to put a comparative together.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. So, have a question? Sir?
No, I, yeah, well, he's, he's going, he's going, I just wanted to see where they spent a million dollars.
Are you done with your, with your resolutions, Director?
Well, no. So remember I just said that I was going to tell you that the, this is in your approval queue, Metro? And it's, so, but it didn't get onto your agenda? So I'm just trying to, so you told me to?
Well, yes. So I was going to get to that. So council members, we're going to have a late item that I actually spoke with, with a couple of you. So we know that the New Jersey state has, the state of New Jersey has a law against tobacco sales, flavored tobacco sales. But we've been getting many, many phone calls of establishments selling CBD to underage children. And we do not have that and we don't have an ordinance of that. So John McKinney, and I've been working with John, with Stacy, and with other, other members of departments so that we can create an ordinance to, to kind of like, you know, nip that. And Stacy, we can talk about it. You want John to come up as well? Stacy here? No? Okay, not here.
Oh, there you are. Do you want me? Okay, so I'm going to, can I, I'll walk through?
Yeah, go ahead.
So there's three points to this. This is a smoke shop and unrelated, an unregulated cannabis ordinance. We've been getting phone calls across the city related to children purchasing cannabis in smoke shops. Many of them, high school students, one high school in particular, which is very close to a smoke shop because smoke shops are unregulated across the city. So there is no license to own a smoke shop. There are licenses to smoke inside a smoke shop and there is one in this city, and that is on Grove Street, Sky Tobacco. No other location. But this particular comes off of the additional things that the council has passed over time and the implementation of this gets lost because there's no one that speaks to a smoke shop. If they would like to open, they go to zoning or construction code. If they, if it's zoned for business, you can open up shop. So many owners don't know the regulatory issues for tobacco control from the state. So I think many of you were here in November 2019 when you passed an ordinance to remove flavored tobacco in all locations. Okay? The only flavor of tobacco you can sell is menthol. And outside of that, the state passed this law. Right? So I sent this to all of you several weeks ago, that the state law came out. So it's not just a Jersey City law, which your council people were the first to do, but this is a state law on flavors. And this has been something that Councilman Rivera and historically former Councilman Levaro worked a long time on because of concerns about vapes in the hands of children with bubble gum flavors, right? So this is some of the issues. So recently, we've had a few smoke shops within a very close proximity to a local high school where several children have been getting sick and hospitalized. So we were asked to take a look at what was going on. Quality of Life Task Force, JCPD went into these locations because traditionally these locations don't have a health license and shouldn't because this isn't a healthy thing. It turns out some of these locations also sell snacks, which then would require them to have a health license, which is how I get tagged into this where, by the way, it's not someplace, this is a big entity. So we sat down with Commerce, JCPD, Quality of Life, and the goal of this ordinance is to just define and provide a carting of sale system for CBD products that might cause intoxication. So that's typically Delta 8, even though it's CBD, is being sold to children and they might not understand like the quantity in which they might ingest and are getting sick from it because there's no education around it. This would also allow Commerce to revoke any license issued if the business is in violation. We've not done that. We're educating people. So the JCPD goes in, sees like cottage industry edibles of CBD that kids are buying. It's getting confiscated from them in the schools. They're getting sick and then we get more phone calls.
So, so let me just interrupt. Council members, we, we, the ordinance is, we sent it to you. We want you to read it because it's important for us to focus on, you know, that the, the safety of our kids is extremely important here. So I want you guys to read it, you know, and focus on it. This is a first reading that we're going to be talking about this weekend. We're more than welcome to, to sit down at our next meeting or if you have any questions, we can, you know, discuss it moving forward. You want a question?
Quick question. So this is focused on CBD, right?
It's focused on unregulated cannabis. So CBD specifically in edible form that kids are buying, like Dorwitos and like Sour Patch Kids infused, and they're like eating it like candy, right? And like, and not understanding what it can do to them because they might be eating like more than they should and not, it's not controlled. So our goal is to ensure that the person selling it understands. So we are under the state law of Tobacco 21 and CBD doesn't come under that.
That's what I was going to add. I don't know if Tobacco 21 means you got to be 21, but?
Yeah, but CBD is technically not considered tobacco.
Okay, so there's no age limit, I guess, on the CBD, right? Because we see CBD everywhere. So I guess, once I read it, maybe I'll understand the parameters, like see it in lotion at Walgreens. Like, how do we? Okay.
The third piece of the ordinance is just to create a registration regimen because we don't know where all of these smoke shops are. Years ago, before the flavored tobacco ordinance that was passed by the council, Councilman Rivera and I were working with a local advocacy group on registration of any shop, whether it's a small corner store or a smoke shop, anyone that sells electric cigarettes. And, and that sort of fizzled when that organization fizzled. And that's just to allow us to be aware so we can go and share with them like flavored tobacco is not legal. And so what we're finding is when we talk to owners, they don't know these rules because they don't have to consult anyone to open their business. So if Commerce knows you're opening, Commerce can provide you with that education and information.
Questions?
Thank you, Director. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilman.
No, it's a good idea.
Thank you, Director.
And them businesses know where that they're involved.
Don't take it from the top.
Okay, just to piggyback up on that late item, is, I heard Director Flanagan say that it's in the queue. Is it actually in iCompass, ready to be approved? Okay. Thank you. All right, straight from the top. So item 3.1 was touched on earlier. Item 3.2, city ordinance 22-037. Is it ordinance authorizing the acquisition by purchase or condemnation of block 3702, lot 21, also known as 117 Hudson Street, for the construction of a new police precinct? Item 3.3, city ordinance 22-038. Is it ordinance authorizing the acquisition by purchase or condemnation of block 3702, lot 39, also known as 18 Sherman Place, for the construction of a new police precinct?
Can you guys describe what's going on here?
Councilman, it'd be best if you just read all three and then others.
Sean?
Yep.
Can I make a recommendation? Two, three, four, and five should be pulled. We should have a closed session on this and this should all be further discussed before all this money spent on these new precincts and everything. Hold on. Let me hear what Metro, what do you have to? We should have a closed session on these four issues here. Can?
Sean, just read 3.4 and I'll discuss it.
Item 3.4, city ordinance 22-039. Is it ordinance authorizing the acquisition by purchase or condemnation of block 26101, lot 5, also known as 1 West Side Avenue, for the construction of a new police precinct?
Sean, so, Councilman, this is, we've been looking at conversations about building a new North District in the Heights and a South District in the South. So this is just the first process in doing our due diligence and making sure we protect our rights to proceed, to acquire these properties in the future. This is not spending any dollars at this time. We have contacted these individual business, property owners and discussed our plans. Just an idea, 3.2 and 3.3 for the North District, these would be for the exits and entrances of the parking in the back. And they're currently vacant lots, so it wouldn't be that we're knocking down any, anyone's house or anything like that. And 3.4 is actually, most of you are probably familiar with, it's a vacant gas station on the corner of Danforth and West Side. So looks like an ideal location to be able to access 440 and then straight up Danforth to the south side of things. So no dollars are being spent here. This is just the first step in the process of acquiring this property. Before we finish this ordinance, it may be that we come to settlement with the property owners and we would not even deploy this. So it's just, just a step in basically public notice to proceed.
John, the North District is a beautiful building. It only has to be taken care of. We built the new West District, which is a mess and it's been a horror show since they built it. We don't need new precincts. The second precinct downtown, which is the East District, the North District, all they have to do is be maintained and fixed up properly. We don't need new buildings and new police precincts. I personally would like a new North District. Put that on the record.
Hey, John, so the idea, so the South will move from off Bergen to 440?
Potentially a site that we're going to look to acquire and just, you know, we were looking at it particularly for traffic possibilities that we'd be able to, you know, access 440 to get directly to quicker routes or then up Danforth to get to the east side of the South.
Wait, they'll be moving to Danforth and West Side?
Yes. We know that corridor of MLK is the highest concentrated crime area probably in the state, definitely in the city. And we're going to move the precinct from one block to?
Well, we're not, we're not doing anything yet, Councilman. This is just, we're looking at the properties as a potential. And those officers that are assigned to the districts are constantly on patrol as it is. So, and, and we do still own that facility, so.
Oh, so we'll, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not necess, yeah, I mean, this is more for offices and.
Upstation, okay.
Yes, stuff, yeah, we're just looking at possibilities at this time and we'll bring back to council any potential renderings or ideas.
But the South needs to really be, that, that district is in bad shape.
Yeah.
In real bad shape.
This is true.
And it needs parking.
And it needs parking. Danny, why is it in bad shape? Because the city doesn't take care of the property. You know, we should sit down and we should talk about this and discuss this in a closed session.
Item 3.5, city ordinance 22-040. Is it ordinance amending Chapter 3, Administration of Government, to restructure and add various departments in the city of Jersey City?
Sean, so you'll see here, this is a pretty extensive ordinance that we're preparing and we'll be happy to discuss with the council during the first, the transition into the second reading and then before final passage. But the high note pieces of this, and Bark will be able to discuss a little bit if there's any questions as far as the, the new creation. But we are, we're looking to fold HR back into administration. Basically keeping the same type of offices that they have now, but just a little bit restructuring and then potentially putting a strong assistant BA on top with the current director, Joanne Rosa, as the leadership to kind of rebuild that department into the division through administration.
Will this expand the powers of the ABAs?
No, so just as a point of inquiry, the way that.
I mean, they should, to be honest, but I'm just wondering.
Yeah, so historically and kind of what we're looking to do is the assistant VAs oversee several divisions and departments as it is. So this would be the same type of structure.
John, just so the record reflects, I get very, a little uneasy when I see restructuring. So if we can have like the exact clarity on how the restructuring is going to look, if people are going to have to reapply for their jobs, if people are going to lose civil service titles or people are going to be moved around, just so we have.
I respect that, Councilman, and I'll go on the record and say that no changes will occur to any civil service titles, salaries, or positions. This is literally on paper, moving the department under administration, which it was previously, and then creating a division rather than a department.
So, so then, to be clear, and I don't know if it makes sense for us to do a closed session around some of this reorganization if we are going to talk about more sensitive personnel issues, but no, no rate of pay will be changed for any employee that may be?
We should discuss that in closed session.
Okay.
I don't want to get into particulars. But, yes, I, I understand the concern of where the Councilman was coming from and I want to verify that nothing would occur as previously happened. But you're right, Council, Councilman, we could.
Just because we don't want to inadvertently.
Correct, correct, you're right.
Share bad information that should not be shared publicly.
You're right, Councilman.
So pro temp, I would, and to the quirk, I would like to suggest a closed session to go over this between first and second read.
Yeah, that's fine. I would just like to just go through the highlights just so we could. So we'll obviously discuss individual personnel in closed session, but another piece of this is creating a Department of Infrastructure, which is something I've discussed with the council previously, kind of putting traffic, traffic engineering, engineering, architecture, sustainability, kind of all into a new established department, establishing a division of traffic in public safety. And this would be all encompassing of parking enforcement, crossing guards, Vision Zero, you know, basically all of our traffic needs, traffic permits, you know, kind of everything all in one. Folding parks into recreation, something we've been discussing for a while now. So forestry would remain with DPW and the division of parks would go into recreation. And just to clarify, as Councilman reiterated earlier, no large substantial changes with civil service titles or reapplying for jobs. And then last but not least, establishing a grant office in finance, which is something that was actually intended when we created finance two years ago, and we're just going to rehash that. So I'll work with the council, with council in closed session to discuss all the details. We could show org charts and go through the process, but this is just a broad overview of the introduction and we'll work together before second reading and adoption, potential adoption.
One, it's more of a comment, I guess, as it relates to the reorganization of parks and forestry and the permitting for the farmer's market. As you know, we do have a farmer's market ordinance, so it might make sense to take a look at that ordinance and what's being proposed here to make sure that it's synced up.
Yep, absolutely. Take a look at that. Thanks, Councilman.
Is this going to streamline things for HR being under the BA and ABA?
Yeah.
Because there's so many vacancies and, I don't know, things get lost in those.
Because there's so many vacancies and, I don't know, things get lost in the sauce. Like, is the ABA gonna have, or BA, are you gonna have like ability to hone in on those vacancies and...
Yeah, absolutely.
Make calls for...
And we'll see a little restructuring there, not necessarily through personnel, but processes, you know. Administration has their own process to get things done, like you see in engineering and architecture, and then we'll implement those strategies into HR.
Just because you are one man, and you're an incredible man, but I think if you had more people that did, you know, that had the, what's it called, the power to, you know...
Yeah, so just in general, and again, we'll talk more about this in public, private session, but the Assistant BAs do have the power as though a Director would have, so...
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
And just for the record, we're going to need a resolution in order to go into a closed session, so hopefully our Law Department will create that resolution to be added on to the meeting. We just need to come up with a date where everyone's available.
So, Council President Potem will have another late item for a closed session for this item.
That's great. Okay.
And the first reading late item was touched on earlier, so we're gonna move on to our second readings. Item 4.1 was touched on earlier. Item 4.2, City Ordinance 22-031, is an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City, adopting amendments to the Powerhouse Arch District Redevelopment Plan regarding the addition of conditional permitted use. Item 4.3, City Ordinance 22-032, is an ordinance supplementing Chapter 332, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3, Parking, Standing, Stopping, amending Section 332-24, No Parking Cert Now is on Carney Avenue in front of 4 Jackson Square. Item...
Hold on, Sean.
Sure.
John, if, um, I know, last time we were here, when we spoke about this on the first read, and I was under the impression that it was on to, it was only going to be two parking slots for no parking. However, I'm looking at the limits here, and maybe my math is off, so I want to ask you if I'm wrong. So, they're saying 40 feet west of Rose Avenue, which runs this way, 180 feet west. Now, the average length of a car is in a proximity of 14, 15, maybe 20 feet? So, even if it's, if it's... So, 180, 180 from Rose to MLK?
I think it's describing the linear distance away from the cross street, but the, but the distance that's establishing the spaces itself is just the 40 feet.
So, the 185, what does the 185 represent?
I think that represents how many feet away from the intersection of those two streets, like from a corner.
So, from Rose to MLK is 185?
Let me double check, Councillor.
Yeah, I mean, the math is, so let's, 40, 80, once, yes, that can't be correct. Maybe 185 represent the lift of the building that we own?
No, I think this is correct. It's saying 185 feet west of Rose Avenue. So, where Rose Avenue intersects with Carney, it would be 185 feet west of where that point of intersection is. That's just a standard way of defining limits, how many feet away from an intersection or from, you know, a street corner. So, the 185 feet does not mean there's a space or there are spaces designated for that distance, it's just saying it's this far away from one point to where the parking space designation begins. So, if a diagram would be more helpful, we could do that, but, but it's not 185 feet that's being blocked off.
Okay.
Oh, Parker, you're saying it's 185 feet from the corner of Rose to where the, the no parking begins?
Right.
And then from that point, it's 40 feet?
Right.
West. Okay. If you're on, I don't know if you're geographically familiar with the area...
Yes.
But if you're on Rose, there's only, I think, two parking spaces, and then a parking lot, and then a third spot, and then our building.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll, you know, I'll have the traffic engineer clarify this on a diagram, and if it's incorrect, we'll just send you in our email follow-ups before the Council meeting, whether or not it was incorrect. But I believe that's what it means.
Okay.
Okay. Next, item 4.4, City Ordinance 22-033, is an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 53, Personnel of the Jersey City Municipal Code, to require that veterans seeking employment as sworn officers in Division of Police or Fire need only demonstrate a bona fide domicile in the City of Jersey City for at least one year prior to the date of their qualifying exam.
Councillor, a few folks reached out to me. We had spawned through this because a veteran had asked us, they, a few people had reached out and asked us to sit down and meet, so if I ask for your discretion to defer this one meeting, so us to sit down and have a conversation and work out concerns, that'd be great.
Okay, so we'll need a motion for that at the meeting. In order to do that, Council President Solomon.
Thank you. I will, I will start the motion.
Okay. Next is item 4.5, City Ordinance 22-034, is an ordinance of the City of Jersey City and the County of Hudson, New Jersey, providing for various capital improvements for the City of Jersey City and appropriating 131 million, therefore, and providing for the issuance of 124,450,000 general improvement bonds or notes of the City of Jersey City to finance the same. Item 4.6, City Ordinance 22-035, is an ordinance adopting amendments to the Water Street Redevelopment Plan regarding property located at block 20701, lots 4 and 5, and block 20704, lots 1 and 2. Council members, before I move on to the rest of the agenda, we do have an item on the tabled agenda, which is item 11.1, City Ordinance 22-029, is an ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City vacating a portion of Commercial Street from the intersection of Cave and Point Avenue and the Jersey Turnpike Overpass. I was provided with all of the notice, the proper notice and certification, so we are able to move on and remove this from the tabled agenda and vote on this if the Council shall approve such a motion. Next, we have our request for a public hearing. We have four speakers as of now, today. Petitions and Communications, items 6.1 through 6.23. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Office of Communications, 7.1 through 7.7. Any questions or comments? We have no report of directors. We have our claims list that's on the meeting. And moving right on to our resolutions. Item 10.1 and 10.2 were touched on earlier. Item 10.3, City Resolution 22-0, excuse me, 22-250, is a resolution introducing and approving the 2022-2023 budget of the Historic Special Improvement District, directing the city clerk to publicly advertise the budget and schedule a public hearing, and directing the tax assessor to prepare an assessment roll of properties within the district based upon the budget. Council members, I will invite the Director of the Historic Downtown Special Improvement District to the meeting that has the adoption, the potential adoption and approval of the assessment roll after the 28 days we've left, send out the notices. Next, items 10.4 through 10.10 were touched on earlier. 10.11, City Resolution 22-258, is a resolution authorizing liens against properties listed herein for the cost of removing the property's bush, weeds, dead and dying trees, stumps, roots, noxious growths, filth, garbage, litter, and debris in accordance with NJSA 40:48-2.14 and the Jersey City Code, Section 287-4. Item 10.12, Resolution 22-259, is a resolution requesting that the New Jersey Department of Treasury conduct a feasible study to determine the revenue potential of local income tax on Jersey City residents to fund the Jersey City Board of Education.
John, so just so everyone know, this resolution is just essentially requesting the Department of Treasury to, to do a study just to see the potential revenue we can generate, not to exceed 1% at various income levels. Ultimately, it may turn out to be something that we can't do, or something that we might not have to do 1%, we may, we may be able to do a half a percent to generate some funding. So, it's just something, a step in the right direction to make sure our kids are taken care of.
Sean?
Yes?
I just want to mention something about this. In 1966, voters said yes to the sales tax because government said it would pay for education. In 1970, New Jersey voters said yes to the lottery because politicians said it would pay for education. We voted for state income tax in 1976 because politicians said it would replace property taxes. So, why haven't any of this been done? I mean, this is absolute baloney. I mean, we've, we've had three passages of ordinances or resolutions through the state, and nothing has been done. And now we're looking again to put another tax on the people? It's gotta be kidding. I mean, I know most of the people here weren't even born in 1966 and stuff, but three, we've had three laws passed to pay for all this education and everything, and nothing has been done. Where's the money for the lottery? Where's the money from the sales tax? Where's the money from the property, to do away with the property tax, with the income tax? Remember, the income tax we pay every time we get paid? Where's the money going? This is getting to be absolutely ridiculous.
Rich, I think this, this is just essentially asking for a study to see the potential. These, these, I don't think they're, it really has nothing to do with the, with the other ones. I mean, I understand your questions, comments, and concerns as it relates to it, but this right here is essentially just to ask the Department of Treasury to do a feasible study.
Listen, the point is, we've passed three, three state laws over the last 20 years, 25 years, 30 years, and nothing has been done. And the people of 1, 2, 3, and 4 family homes are being crucified in this city with all these taxes. Enough is enough. A year ago, a year and a half ago, the members of this board here were assigned to the Board of Education. I was put on the Finance Committee, so was Joyce Waterman. I've contacted the Board of Ed several times over the last two years, actually two years, never got an answer back. They never got back to us or anything. So, you know, like, something has to be done.
Okay.
Councillor, one, just one comment slash question about this. When you do, should this move forward? I would like to understand reciprocity for people who live in Jersey City but work in another state. Because I know, for example, when I worked in New York City, I, there were intricacies with my taxes as it related to the New York City tax and what was applicable in the different states. So, I know that in the tri-state area, there are some reciprocity. I would just like, like to also have that fleshed out, so we understand that as well.
Yes, so after we get the study, then we will have more clarity on all of the language that need to be put into, to everything. Just first step, just to see...
I, I just don't, for me, I think that this is a good, you know, conversation to have. I just don't feel as though the public would find this palpable, like another tax. I personally know that, well, not know, but rich people don't put their money in their salary. They usually put it in stocks and bonds and investments, and, you know, even if you look at Jeff Bezos, his base salary is like 81,000. This is just going to be a tax on hardworking people. And I think it's, you know, it comes from a good place where we're trying to fund our schools, but I think we should be looking at the recreational cannabis. I also think we should look internally, the usage of our vehicles across the city, I think, needs to be looked at, every department, the entire fleet, every, every single department, and find out what we're using, how they're being used. And that's something that's been a concern for me lately. So, I think we need to find cost-cutting measures internally. That's, that's where I stand, honestly.
Me, so again, it's, it's just a study. We don't even know what bracket or what, what salary the tax is gonna kick in at, you know? So, again, it's, it's just a study, and we have to, you know, do the study to get the information. Once we get the information, then we can make an executive decision like, well, no, this is gonna hurt this group, this is gonna hurt them. But at the very least, I mean, to ask for studies to be conducted at no fee to support our public school systems, it should be a layup. I mean, it's asking for a study.
Frank, you should be asking the question, where, these state laws we passed, the three of them, where's the money gone? Why isn't it being used?
I mean, I think we can ask multiple questions, Rich. You know, we don't just ask one question, you know, we ask multiple questions. You bring, you bring up a great point. I'm not dismissing that point. What I'm essentially saying is that as a council, you know, we create a resolution to ask the state to do a study. And then furthermore, we can have more dialogue to make sure everyone is paying into all of those taxes, making sure people and companies are in compliance with all of those taxes. I don't think, it shouldn't be one versus the other. We can have the conversation about multiple things.
All right. Just, and your thing, ask the state, what, where's the money going from those three things I just read off? Because it's an absolute joke. And as I said, the taxpayers of this city, the 1 to 4 families especially, are tired of all these, the art tax, this tax, that tax. They're tired of it.
I think what we're just proposing is a study. So, let's just see what the study says, or if we're gonna go down that road and let's, you know, act. Once we get that in front of us, then we can make decisions moving forward. Okay, Sean?
Okay. Item 10.13, Resolution 22-260, is a resolution authorizing the execution of a license and gift agreement between the City of Jersey City and the Hamilton Park Neighborhood Association to create a memorial plaque program. Item 10.14 was touched on earlier. Item 10.15, Resolution 22-262, is a resolution authorizing the City of Jersey City to execute a license agreement with 352 Marin LLC for the use, for the public use of nine parking spaces at the surface lot located at 352 Marin Boulevard. Item 10.16 was touched on earlier. 10.17, Resolution 22-264, is a resolution authorizing the City of Jersey City to execute an identification agreement with First American Title Insurance Company, Chicago Title Insurance Company, and CB Title Group LLC for outstanding judgments against properties identified in the city's tax map as block 11612, lot 2, qualifier C0201, and C0202, C0203, C0204, and C0207. Item 10.18 was touched on earlier. 10.19, Resolution 22-266, is a resolution authorizing a shared service agreement with the Jackson Hill Main Street Management Corporation to assist in development, implementation, and administering the Neighborhood Preservation Program grant, and authorizing the acceptance of Related Implementation Plan. Items 10.20 through 21 were touched on earlier. Item 10.22 is a resolution, excuse me, Resolution 22-269, is a resolution ratifying an agreement with Central Square Technologies for providing maintenance and support services for the, for one solution payroll and personal management system. Item 10.23, Resolution 22-270, is a resolution authorizing the payment of a claim submitted by Central Square Technologies Superowner LLC for the maintenance of the city's payroll syst, excuse me, of the maintenance of the city's payroll and personnel management system. Item 10.24 through 30 were touched on earlier. Item 10.31, Resolution 22-278, is a resolution ratifying the emergency contract award to Continental Hardware for the emergency work at City Hall, 280 Grove Street, to repair the uneven loose and missing floor tiles for the Department of Administration, Division of Engineering and Traffic.
Can I ask about that? I just wanted to know why it's in an emergency contract?
I thought we approved this. I'm talking about tiles and one of the tiles.
Councillor, because it's a trip hazard, so...
Councilman, because it's a trip hazard, so this is for immediate repairs, and then we'll go and actually do the work through a contract, so this is just for those, literally the missing pieces that are plated and taped, and, yeah, that are coming up off the, off the ground, it's not to redo the entire floor with this contract.
Okay, yeah, I, I understand, we do need to correct that, I mean, but correct or wrong, we did the sort of unearthing of the tiles right in 2020, is this sort of, are these trip hazards new, yeah, they've come up?
Yeah, Councilman, they're coming up constantly on the first floor, at least, and they're just peeling up because of the age of those tiles, so we've been covering them with some steel plates and sort of taping down, but we're seeing new ones almost on a daily basis, so this would, the work that was done on the second floor, this would be similar to that in terms of restoring the historic tile where possible, and where it isn't, trying to get as close match, close of a match as possible, while making sure they're not being lifted up and sort of leaving like holes in certain places along the hallways.
Got it, so that's coming to do for the first floor, was done on the second floor?
Correct.
Okay, understood, thanks.
Okay, items 10.33 through 10.37 were touched on earlier, 10.38, Resolution 22-285 is a resolution amending professional service agreement with Brion, Cochrane, and Michel LLC to represent the City of Jersey City in various arbitrations. Item 10.39 was touched on earlier, item 10.40, Resolution 22-287 is a resolution authorizing the settlement of the action entitled Angel Diaz versus Stephen V. Delamonica.
Item- Just very quickly, I'm sorry, Councilman Rivera, do you know if, will the Council President be out all week, or, okay, I will make sure that a copy of that memo gets to you, Council, Councilman Rivera.
Thank you.
Okay, item 10.41, 20, Resolution 22-288 is a resolution honoring St. Peter's University on their occasion of the sequential tenial anniversary celebration, it's 150 years. Item 10.42, Resolution 22-289 is a resolution declaring April 14th Dr. B.R. Ambedkar Birthday as Equality Day, and 10.43 was touched on earlier, 10.44, Resolution 22-291 is a resolution honoring the centennial founding of A. Harry Moore Laboratory School in Jersey City, and we're going to be adding a late item, 10.45, Resolution 22-292, which will be a closed session resolution, and Peter, I think you were out of the room when I was asking about that.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone else have anything else?
Yep, I just wanted to, I mentioned when we were discussing the Horsmus Cove Station redevelopment amendments that the Embankment Coalition was sending, their statement, they sent it to me, I will forward it to all of you, so you have it, as I said, they have concerns with the approach that's being taken, so I want you guys to, you know, read it, if you have any issues, obviously, they can speak for themselves, you'll have the contact information, I'm happy to chat with anybody as well, and we'll go from there.
Any other questions?
But we are intending to amend that ordinance, correct, Councilperson Solomon?
Yes, correct.
Any other questions or concerns?
Is it going to be, you're asking if it's going to be on?
Yes, that, that's a late item, it's going to be a first reading ordinance, 3.6. I believe we stated that for the record, I'm sorry if you didn't hear that. That's okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn at 5:59 PM?
Motion.
So that motion, I heard, the strong motion I heard was Councilperson Saleh, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by, I wasn't looking, help, there you go, Councilperson Ridley, on the motion to adjourn at 5:59 PM, Councilperson Ridley, Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano, Councilperson Saleh.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Gilmore. Councilperson DeJes.
Aye.
And Council President Pro Temp Rivera.
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0 to adjourn at 5:59 PM. Thank you so much, everyone, and remember, as I always say, teamwork makes the dream work, have a great night, stay safe.